At this time of my call to order the regular board meeting, the Lee County Board of Education started with Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you all for being here. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence. We send ourself on the issues coming before our board tonight. Thank you. If you would, please now join me in a pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we have the public comments portion of our board meeting, and we have one public commentary this evening, Mr. Allen Wood, if you would, please. Mr. Womack, you remember, you have three minutes. I think you know that you're at this point, but the completion will be after three minutes. I'll say thank you very much.
Thanks. Allen Wood, one thousand and ninety-fourth year in Sanford. So I've heard here before that we should be using data to make a study on the side blocks from looking at guys tonight. Um, after Miss Womack speculated in her closing comments last month about some of the reasons teachers were leaving, I wanted to research that a bit and see if I could find any data on that topic. I didn't find much specific regarding teachers leaving the profession, but I did find and review twenty twenty-two teacher working condition survey uh for Lee County School. For the sake of time, I focused on middle and high schools since our elementary schools are rated above average as a whole according to public school review dot com. So I found a few things that I wanted to share. Um, and these values are an average of the scores for our five middle and high school. And this is the percentage of teachers that agree with the children's statements. Number one, students at this school follow rules of conduct. Only forty-two percent of teachers agree with that. Two, teachers consistently enforce rules per student conduct. Only forty-seven percent agree. Three, school administrators consistently enforce rules per student conduct. Only sixty-one percent agree. So it sounds like we have some serious disappointment here where students aren't acting right, and they're also not being held accountable. Do you think that has negative impacts on morale and overall school performance? I do, and I'm interested to know what's being done about that. Number one, teachers feel comfortable raising issues and concern to their improvement to them. Only sixty-four percent agree. The problem with that statistic should be self-explanatory. Every teacher should feel comfortable sitting up if they have a concern. That's a big problem. Number four, parents can guardian support teachers contributing for their success with students. Only sixty-three percent agree. So I would treat my fellow parents that that's embarrassing. School is not a day to, and we need to step up and do better if we expect our kids a good education. Six, physical conflicts among students rarely occur at this school. Only twenty-six percent agree with that. Seven, bullying is not a frequent problem at this school. Only thirty-three percent agree. So why on earth would anyone with feelings to find a charter or a private alternative ever send their kid to Lee County Middlewood High School with numbers like that for bullying? This must be a priority, and not just for one group, though. It needs to be parents first, obviously, but then administrators and teachers alike. So here's my statistics that I have time to share. Um, the average number of teachers at our middle and high school that agreed that this survey was used to drive improvement is only fifty-two percent. So I've been out here for almost a year now, and I've listened to many of you make comments about how much you support Lee County teachers, but that statistic says otherwise. If half the teachers in this school think that this direct feedback from them is ignored, why would they ever feel valued by their upper management, which includes this board? Do you think that has anything to do with why teachers are leaving us rather than solely for more money, as some of you have said in the past? I do.
So, that's fine. Thank you. That concludes the public comments portion of tonight's meeting. At this time, I've asked the board members to share groups on a school vision and policy statement. Miss Womack, your vision. Lee County Schools, a partnership with the community, will provide learning and learning experiences for students who are safe and supported in Brown. We're committed to act them with excellence, ethics, innovation, social responsibility, and life beyond learning. Our success will be demonstrated by their achievement of our students in the classroom, participation, and society. Thank you. Hello, that's my whole idea. I'm sorry, but you were gone.
The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to and accept the code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work on our board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice consistent on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. Avoid misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid any confidential information publicly. The board accepts the code of ethics established by North Carolina School Board Association.
Thanks. At this time, I need to make one minor amendment to the agenda prior to our motion to approve. There's item number. Let me get to the second page. Item number six, under the new business, I'm sorry, under the consent agenda, the security entrance design. At the request of the superintendent, we want to remand that back to uh the committee for further review. So we're going to remove item number six from the consent agenda.
Motion for approval as created, I remove items.
Can we have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Second, we have a second, is there any discussion? Hearing one, all in favor, so the private say no.
Alright.
Any opposed? There is none. The agenda amendment is approved. You have before you the minutes of the regular board meeting of August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the student transfer appeal hearings at nine, seven, twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Okay. We have a motion in seconds during the discussion. Hearing one, all in favor, so the private say no. I'm in. Any opposed? There is none. The minutes are approved. The termality report is relatively brief this evening. We do have uh the national, I'm sorry, not the national, the North Carolina Association Conference coming on in November. And there were several different awards we talked about last month. If there are any motions to nominate someone for any of these awards, I would entertain those at the time. Hearing one, it's fine. Uh, we'll let that one go. However, do we have any board members who will be willing and able to attend the delegate assembly on November fourteenth at the Creek Community Center in Greensboro as a voting delegate? We have the opportunity to send up to four voting delegates, and if, in fact, you are going, we'll need to register you for the conference.
I'd be able to.
Okay, what do you mean? Um, you can have up to four. Okay, I will be attending as a board director, so I'm I'm already set up for your delegates. So, Mr. Woddy, Miss Womack, myself. We have room for one more. In the event that one of the, that you cannot go, just let us know, because any other board member can attend. Once directed, we afford the delegate to serve. If don't, register for the delegate if you don't, we've given up that opportunity to have a delegate represent us. It's not a coincidence, and we do figure out that you can go after that, just know, and we'll still have time to get that through. I just want to make sure that we know. So at this time, we will have registered Woddy, Womack, and Owen as our voting delegates to the North Carolina School Board Association. We have a motion to approve these members as voting delegates representing Lee County Board of Education. Motion for approval. Wait, I'll listen to what's said. Any other discussion? Hearing one, all in favor, so the private say no. Any opposed? There are none. Basically, members have all the rights to vote in um the place that we had a vote, the representation of the North Carolina School Board Association without a vote. Thank you. Okay, now, uh, this past Friday, I did get the opportunity to attend a very uh very long, somewhat tedious, but very effective, very useful meeting of the legislative agenda, legislative committee of the board of directors of North Carolina's board association. That's remarkable. And uh, we were able to, we were able to advocate data from all of our school board commissioners. And I owe this board a vote of gratitude. I was so proud to be your chair at this meeting, because there are a hundred and fifteen LEAs in North Carolina. Each LEA was sent the legislative survey that all of you were sent. Out of the hundred and fifteen LEAs, only ten school boards had a hundred percent response rate, and our board was one of those. And I am so grateful for that, because you don't realize, just like we tell people all the time, your vote matters, reputation matters, and it's going to drive what we, as a school board association, advocate for on behalf of our students, our staff, and our boards of education. So it is so very important that you take part in that. I was very saddened to see that there were seven school board committees that had people striking. Not a single member of their boards bothered to respond to the survey, and that just really kind of shows a level of advocacy that I hope never happens in Lee County. And so thank you board for, hey, we look good, and it can also get good in Lee County, but we care about education, and we care about what's going on in our government. So thank you for that. It was, it was exciting to be there. Um, we want to have one more virtual meeting before the school board association conference, where we will finalize the legislative agenda that will be put to the full voting body. And so it'll be uh very exciting to share that information with you all at the next coordinating once that legislative agenda is re-organized. But we have some, some very important issues facing education in North Carolina, and we have strong advocacy that we will um talk to our legislators about what we need to better serve students in our county. So that concludes the chairman's report. Doctor Darno, welcome to the board and to the president's report.
Thank you, Chair. Um, all members, I appreciate being here tonight. Wanted to give everybody an instructive school update. Uh, where we've, where we've been, we've had a outstanding opening for our schools over the last uh few weeks. And, and we, obviously, they're coming off a, a great summer where we had a lot of skill development and progress for students, to support students, and helped to catch up uh with funding delays from the uh pandemic. And also gave them special curricular opportunities if they could not pursue other ones, and they're like, that was a, a great opportunity for students. Uh, did part with administrators, teachers on curriculum alignment, etc. But as we got into the first heartbeat to uh begin from back to school, uh, there was just a certain, I've referenced this in my weekly update, just a certain electricity in the air, uh, about the positive nature of, of uh students uh coming back, and also all the parents that are building with, with open arms. And uh, just to sort of kick that off, in front of all of our uh school, traditional county schools, we had a big welcome back sign that sort of, I think, um um, tried to point home about how happy we were to have people back, and all of the parents and students taking pictures in front of this sign, the photos. Uh, a neat way to get started back, and I think that has started a great start. And uh, uh, as playing for the first couple weeks, I, I think it's just been um, uh, just exciting, and everybody's glad for that. Uh, just a few, a few updates about some of the things we've got going on, uh, that I've talked about a lot with the community. But uh, we certainly put some different things in place, and I think our parents, students, and society have done. Uh, at the elementary uh school level, obviously, our teachers have been working on uh the science program and a lot of professional development. Uh, some, your, obviously, for them, supporting professional development. Went back a lot of time and effort, not only on work, but here with us, belongs to the time out of, out of work. Where they have spent a lot of time to literacy, uh, initiatives that's going on across the state. I'm very proud of all the students, our principals, who, who actually started this in November of twenty twenty. And we, we had our own initiative working in the research, the support, giving literacy. And uh, yeah, six months later, we ended up with the science re-invested company state, and uh, we're just very excited about that. Sort of as a companion to that, it's also being um seen at the K fourteen level. This is our introduction to Spanish language, um, forced to learn uh across uh perspective from the schools. And um, obviously, we've always had Spanish at the high school level. Um, but we've also uh this introduced a dual immersion program for kindergarten students at uh Broadway, Tremway, and Elementary School. And uh, class kindergarten teachers from each one of those uh schools, as you know, have been learning Spanish. Ninety percent, uh, ninety percent Spanish, and you can confess ten percent English. We also have four-year teachers within our elementary schools, and also our pre-初二 language in middle school. So it's truly helping the K fourteen level. I'm very, very excited about that. We've got great feedback on it, and uh, it's just, it's just been outstanding. At our middle schools, um, given feedback being uh received from uh teachers and distance support we want getting placed uh at the middle schools, we added uh teams of students at each middle school, and also academic coaches to support our teachers with comprehensive instruction. Our team of students really take a proactive approach when they're working with students and families, trying to make sure that we had all the problems that we have. And uh, as we all know, the pandemic has created some uh very difficult circumstances for, from behavior to mental health issues. We felt like, you know, the uh teams of students had to adopt extra support track, and during the first two and a half weeks, we've seen that. And I've gotten a lot of feedback from, from staff, from met with about how, how important that's been and what a difference it makes. Our academic coaches are working with our teachers in middle schools, and they've done a lot of work with uh just getting the classrooms and trying to support them. And uh, also getting great feedback on that as well. At high school level, we've done a lot of curriculum work this summer with uh with our lead teachers and teachers being involved, doing a lot of planning, etc. So very excited about that. And, and as you also know, we've opened up our, our seventy career academies at high school level. We have our life science academies. That's the same for lead charities on the hub for life science, uh, economic development. And uh, we want to be part of that pipeline and supporting that. Uh, two life science academies are on addition to the, the career programs we already have in place. From engineering, healthcare, tourism, finance, of course, life sciences, eight, two total career academies. Very, very excited about that. And of course, now, sort of uh, sometimes we forget, but with a great, great standard, there are already sort of, sort of opportunities are already there. With our national black lawyer program at Virginia High School, um, on our, our Central Iowa Works program, helps students with Dylan Roman and rolling through the Dylan Roman courses. And of course, our county leadership programs and other initial programs we've been developing uh with uh local businesses. So it's been very exciting. We've also been able to have a junior class in middle schools uh with our um uh, with our Apple app development program. Uh, we think that's going to make a big difference with also getting good, like, with Nelson as well. Also, um, as you know, September first, I sent a letter out to the community. I moved my weekly letter up to page thirty, September first, the performance grade was announced. And um, ten of our working schools met or exceeded grade, which uh, given the condition of the pandemic, we were very excited about. And nine, one of those ten schools um exceeded grade, which was, I think, uh, very important. From the state level perspective, um, about seven percent um of uh schools across the state met or exceeded grade, but about seventy-one percent of ours did not exceed grade. Transpiration rates for us not between seven point seven, but stable, so just ten, six point two. So we're excited still to be, let's say, there. Not, say I'm not with that, but always, always looking to improve and, and preach uh all the hard work that everybody put in place, particularly them in dinner, to, to make that happen. Across the state, there were some um trends that uh, my state superintendent, Captain Stewart, felt like came out of the pandemic. I think, I think most educators are sort of observing across state, though, like this. Obviously, these, these um, these scores were impacted by the pandemic and what happened. Uh, the number of local school in the state doubled from four eight, 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 sixty-four. And uh, you know, we had four local school at uh J.R. Anglin, East Lady, place the Amrican High School. Uh, if you look at the surrounding counties, um, because I really don't think it's about the person, let's speak, but I think we felt pretty well in relation to the number of local school you had. And it also matched up with some of the things we'd always put in place. Uh, a lot of things actually were put in place to uh, to address the individual issues. Um, the number of local school districts across the state increased from eight to twenty-nine. And um, we, we are not a local school district, um, but it does, just off to that trend, uh, what schools across the state and, and the country to that matter, we're similar with um, with pandemic. Uh, New York Times article actually came out that same day on September first, talking about uh, late scores and how those things had, had um declined in the impact of that. So, um, we are, we are uh working really hard and uh so excited about feedback I've gotten. Uh, student advisory groups have started meeting. Uh, teacher advisory groups have started meeting, and getting some great feedback on that. And just look forward to everything. I'd finally just like to say that um, just want to thank all of our educators for everything they have done uh to, to, to help us in the last two years, and most of the way to help our students. Our teachers have been critical. He's with us. They, they have worked really hard to support our schools. I thought it was very fitting on the work day before school started that we were able to recognize our teacher of the year, Tommy Hackett. He was at that time at Stanley Middle School, has now moved to Southern High School, uh, to be teacher, and also he plays our coach there. And uh, he was, it was just a, a wonderful opportunity to reward a, a great teacher. And uh, we're, we're very um, uh, grateful to be in such a great community with uh educators, parents, students, and all the business teams that we get. We're excited to be a great unit, you know?
If you had shared with me uh specifically, it just came from my mind again, can you tell the group about how many students have involved in your student advisory groups?
What, what are the neighborhoods about? Down in E two hundred, but.
I definitely remember doing pandemic checkouts and stuff, where people were saying, no, listen to the student, they'll tell you what they need. And I just want people to realize, they really are listening to the student, from what they see and what they need and what they feel uh will help them to achieve. And I, I thought it was, when you told me the other day that you had some ninety students on a regular communication with you, I was just in the start, and I thought that was fantastic.
And I think, I think, I think we can, you will probably extend that a little bit um with, with Mary, but been very, very uh grateful for them. And their feedback and, and honesty.
The possibility of really challenging, like, you are.
They are very capable and high affectionate, and uh, and, and great question. Then they allow, they allow me to ask them questions as well, and I think it's a great conversation.
I mean, it's interesting to have a lot of teacher knowledge.
Uh, with the teacher advisory, we, we have, well, it's a couple, it's a couple of different groups. Um, the teacher advisory, uh, we have um, our teacher of the year, principal of the year, class, uh, employees of the year. So it cuts across all, all groups, probably the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five as a, as a total. And uh, some people, they all can be there just because things are going on. Uh, but I've been, I've been reading with them um, across the pandemic, and uh, we're meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks. And we'll be talking about uh things that are, you know, important to them, and I'll share some information about where we are with things. Um, it's been, it's been great, great feedback.
Do we have a, do we actually know currently?
Actually, some of that works through our uh school group meetings, so I get some feedback that way. And I'm also in the process of putting uh together some parent groups as well. They're going to be meeting across school. So I'm looking forward to that.
I don't mind, um, see, I could still mark questions, it's just obviously because we all like to know with the parents, with the children in school, preparing now, up early. Uh, my question, you're considering the survey results that was provided earlier in the reverse of teachers' stats. I think, is there a possibility of maybe adding a few teachers from those particular schools to your teacher advisory panels?
Well, all the schools are represented on the teacher advisory, and I also mean with individual school and their school group meetings. Um, and I will add one other thing, uh, in reference to keep on the chief of working, to do this survey. Um, our principal's this summer covered teacher working conditions and review that. Uh, winter on professional development, uh, the Excel Lake Conference that we had back in July. And uh, all of our teams, the administrative team, whether uh, with him, who were in the discussion surveys. And uh, I think it was a great opportunity to take a look at things we feel like are going well, we can improve. And uh, it was great, and I think they can use and will use, and I, and information that we would use at the promise level to uh, to make decisions. I'll, I'll, and that, um, April, one of the things that um, didn't really come directly, it didn't come out of what we should survey. But when I come back and talk about the dean of students and academic coaches, that was not understood. We knew with input already from teachers and what we could see and what can update, etc.
Can you press two three and possibly two three, and any that you got from the office that you're going to make changes on?
Which, from the, some, some people.
Yes.
Um, a lot of the teams that we had already made, but um, one of the things we did is we um, we had a session on the uh, the last day that went for a couple hours that talked about processes. And all the principals met with uh, all, all the, basically, all the administrators and commissioners had gathered. And um, administrators went from uh department to department talking about things that we can bring, we're going well. And um administrators went from uh department to department talking about things that we can appreciate, we're doing well. And things we could help with processes. And uh I think I was gr- uh grateful for that. I think we were able to put some things in place from just uh able to facilitate answers on issues in various departments. And streamlines and information that was going out, uh given how we were conducting meetings and making sure how the same thing, I mean, like are to be raised. And the um calibration to share and be able to communicate that information. So um lots of things that we just sort of, they're daily things that sometimes you don't take the time to think about. But I think that feedback was from the administrators uh at that time was very helpful and it was helpful, it was tremendous.
Any other questions? You heard it? Thank you. I didn't know, we'll make the committee reports, there were very few committee meetings, but it was around preaching and instructing, there was no meeting last month, but I believe the next meeting is scheduled for September twenty-first. Uh at Lee County High School, facilities and technology, Mr. McCraken, I believe you have that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh the the S and T committee met August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. And we have two items business on the agenda that we will present on our consent night. First would be in Contara Ultra Broadboard L L E L S C Service Freedom. It was a consensus of the committee to approve Contara Ultra Broadboard Service. Um and this is gonna be on consent agenda. And also, um second is the um consensus of committee toward the crimes of storage part being a part beer to bring USA Incorporated. An amount of three thousand dollars, three hundred eighty-nine, and that will be on the consent agenda that's slated. And those are my two items uh to be presented in our next F T meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, four thirty in the hands here. That will be coming forward.
Thank you. And the finance, we met on August twenty-fifth, I believe that one of the issues as well.
Yes, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Um the first item that we discussed, we will be um asking for board approval tonight. This is Dr. Brian mentioning our letters, uh training stipends, um where all of our um elementary school teachers um for going to state required meetings. Uh with summer reading, very extensive um units, um four units per year. And we will be asking tonight uh to um have a stipend for folks doing that. Um and state and person for districts offer these stipends to people similar in dollar amounts to surrounding counties. We put that um in noting the estimate we use to uh fund this proposal. And these uh stipends, as y'all mentioned a bit later, would be for training outside of uh professional development. And then um the uh attempt you can take to further um make sure that they understand everything that's at the letter's front. The next uh item is the D A Y A D A home health care invoice with Miss Jones presenting. And contracts were done for six months about a full-time nurse that brought online as just preschool student that requires a full-time caregiver. And that contact totals twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars from August to December. And that will be on our consent agenda, as well as the equalized history services LLC invoice, which uh gives us services for hearing impaired students for a trainway. One student at J K Edwards, amount of three three thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars. Um the other items, which is F Y I's of our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three releases. Our board attorney invoices, our finance report, the board expense summary. Our next unit being spelled, we have first December twenty-nine, with uh five P M, then the hands gearing, and that's two hour report.
Thank you. And the policy committee did not have a meeting last month. The next meeting is currently scheduled for September twentieth.
It's after the end of the fall.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have consent agenda before us. You see the list here. Can I hear the motion?
Some more.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda that was presented, but we haven't seen it. It's only a discussion.
There are several questions. Uh the good thing about before they'd been over and people being more active in the community is they're actually reading our F Y I report. And I've already given us the attention to the superintendent and Dr. Walker, who's going to clarify for us. The standard policy when they fill out fundraiser forms, instance, one question was, how can we build your standard no cost? They could absolutely come donations, but just doesn't say it on fundraisers. There were two fundraisers that stated that the total cost of the fundraising project was one thousand dollars. However, the cost of the activity was a thousand dollars. You rather than exactly improve the profit. So it's not anything we need to worry on, but I just want the board and community aware that I brought that to their attention. And they will be uh be providing us with some type of proceeding deposit that they have in order to start this course. So they're all consistent.
Okay. Um we have a motion to second on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing one, all in favor, sitting, aye. Aye, vote. Any opposed? There is none. There's no unfreezing business left over from the free business meetings. We moved to new business at this time. We have the letter screening stipends that uh Mr. McCracken, Free Minton, would like to give more detail on that or let's do it.
Yeah, I think we're pretty good saying this. Uh our teachers, uh known right, um preschool teachers are working extremely hard. Not only during professional development time, but in some after school hours. And we just want to present a slide for them um for their their work um. And the certifications that they can receive based on this extensive uh sign of feeding program.
Um the letter's training, Mr. Dr. Do you want to say anything about it or you're good? I wasn't sure.
Probably playing, I got, also not were good there.
I I had one or two things, which is real quick that I don't think I've ever mentioned yet. Um the estimated number of hours of training outside of classrooms is about a hundred and sixty hours, where we was told of us. Uh and the reimbursement breakdown, I believe, Mr. McCracken, if I'm wrong, uh it's a thousand dollars for the training and a thousand dollars if you pass the test at the end. Certified uh picture letter certified, so um I just wanted to mention those two items. I think those are important to notice tonight.
Go ahead, that's what I was about.
Any other questions, comments regarding the other stream? Hearing one, I would even call a motion. Make a motion to approve, we can't avoid a motion to approve the letter's training stipends. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, one of the rest of the second, a discussion. Hearing one, all in favor, signify by the V I. Any opposed? There are, like, I've heard some favorite, this letter's training is kind of like doing graduate level work only in an accelerated fashion. So I I do um appreciate those who have taken this additional take it to heart. There's been really been more fun for this and further standards. We also have the second item in the new business, which is the E K G program, uh addiction in pants, not been violent, it's not too bad.
This is actually a program that we were discussing in pre-teen comment. And uh then uh came up, just turned down was off because in two hundred local district training. And uh was with our sheriff department as partners, sort of uh uh a group company together. It's uh it's basically a uh two-hour program that um members of sheriff department would deliver to our students by educating about uh gun violence. And uh so because uh because the partnership where the sheriff officers in district training, um the uh South Dallas department is training uh in the western part of the state. Um to uh look at implementation, important of this, for like a silly professional from educator's perspective across students. And um which shares if you're burning, not being involved, can I pardon that, if you feel, if you're ready more and training for the uh sheriff department, they take us.
Cool. I mean, uh what they've been doing is a two-hour training, is it during a class instruction time, is it?
It's separate, and it's gonna be a workout, which is with the sheriff department, and then they can do it in the program time in the school that.
But it can be broken down with its own.
Just wait, just wait an hour, learn forty times, so it's about two, four periods.
That's what they teach you, I'm saying.
Uh there was a sheriff department, it's um mentor staff, we've been trained, and uh we're gonna get together and talk a little bit about these kind of permanent collection news, but. We have lots of members of the sheriff department besides our advisors coming in now to the day of our schools, I feel very charged.
Thank you.
Great piece to sheriff department.
And this is by no cost, you can just hold it.
No cost to us. Correct.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve this there second, I think. I hope so. I have about three seconds. Uh thank you. It's very important discussion. Hearing one, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We think the program is great to reinforce schools. At this time, we have three heads of five, which one member of the sheriff comments on the issues or or is it or whatever they might feel uh they literally discuss. See if they, I'll pick us around that into the table last one for a second. I will start on you, little Kim.
Hi, thank you. Um recently, I was contacted by a member of our community, uh David Jenker, had concerns. He brought to me about the R O T C program and the space that was allowed for Southern High School to hit to retire the structure, um R O T C structure from that school. Um we kept going and used it for school to bring some school supplies and found that the space has moved away from uh two recording rooms to two wood room. Um and he was concerned that there were um there was not enough space to be able to um meet the contract requirements. Whether or not how the air acted major department, we keep that quality that um it demands. He also had concerns to me when he spoke to me about the wall that being down. And these are those concerned uh for him, I'm like, maybe visit to uh both the R O T C programs back on September seventh, we went to I B County High School and. So it would be possible to just see what was going on and take um see that's the visit. Uh but we'll say that those quality, those programs are very high quality programs. I was extremely impressed um at Southern Lee High School. Charlie T C, Carl McIntyre is there um as an instructor, does the lead there, they just really have um a high quality, high expectations for students there. Uh we were able to speak with um the principal there and Carl McIntyre about our concern. There's an activity report that we were told there has to be a port rag, um watch our group content. And at the time, we were told that there were eighty students in the program and that typically there's about two hundred students in the program, at least in the past. And that um the technical requirements are that ten percent of the student volume or minimum of a hundred students should be uh in that program to be compliant. So uh that was what we found out, and at the current time, um the program is not in probation. But the concern was that when the stood-up to the report submitted with the lowest enrollment, that it could be uh deemed in probation by Fort Rad. So that was um, it was somewhat of our visit there. And so two days later, um all the board members started to cancel out the ground and this were, um there were one that did um she actually called out the ground, this sheriff concerns. Uh we asked for a couple of terrorists to help with space, but he worried to check that, which we got, said that um it was an update, that everything was good, that the program was in compliance. It's not being dangerous, being in probation, that everything was in good standing, and that he'd spoken with the ministers at Southern and Carl McIntyre. So my question is, if we are in it's standing, and I want to believe we are, I wonder what happened in two days? What happened to change what we were told and we were there on people's list? I also wanted to emphasize that McCracken has always taken great pride in our R O T C programs, they've been outstanding, they've been a part of our community. And I just want to see those programs continue to flourish because they do mean so much to our students, not just military preparation, but also teaching them honor, loyalty, respect. Leadership, confidence, great skills for any career path that they take. And I also believe the R O T C is important towards student retention because a lot of students that come just like a program has a connection they build within those five days. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Um since you could pose a question about the the issues that was, uh Dr. Brian, do you get us some answers for those questions and perhaps? Um share those either in your next meeting or via email or something? Thank you very much. Um Mr. McCracken, uh we'll give you the floor in three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh first of all, a big thank you to all of the Lee County School family. Um going above and beyond to make first couple of weeks of starting school just unbelievable. Um to defend in the school, you don't know what it takes um to make fifteen runs beautifully. And just a big thank you to all of the Lee County School family. Um uh two shout-outs today, our first one is um I congratulate my coach, Charlie Spardon, he is Dutch, he lives in North Carolina High School Athletic Association. I'm holding fame, Dutch, and I had the privilege to send it from all the very thankful, it was well worth the evening. And um please help uh and join us on the Lee County High School where it's ritual football game to uh start a great, yeah, accomplishment um for Chris Spardon. And then the last thing, I cannot describe in my very best, I'm doing thing on my phone while I'm up here, but I have a picture that I've referred to a lot last few days. If anybody would like to see it after the meeting, I'd love to show it, but it shows a pre-county high school graduate um who's playing football at Appalachian State. And uh I had the opportunity to be able to call his name out many a time from the first box, and we called him E A P um for the Hundred Dingle Prince. And uh this picture shows uh D J B signing autographs after the game on Saturday to two kids, like, who may be late nine years old. And uh this just didn't happen overnight, folks, this is this is from good supportive parents. Um this is from teachers of every, this started with uh D J B in elementary school and working his way to middle school and high school. So congratulations to him, and uh I'll continue to look at this picture when uh I need a little motivation myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miss Hope.
I would like to congratulate the students and teachers on the voting, showing that despite the pandemic. Some of our students grew by a greater role, but unfortunately, due to the formula used for scorecard cards, public does exceed as a purpose. Thank you to all of our teachers and support staff who encouraged, pardoned, mannered, framed, and lightly proud of their students. Our school, more than a letter grade assigned by a corny design of their law, they are homes in open homes, they are love, they are dedication, and they are the heart of our community. Keep up the great work. I see all your very great students.
Thank you. Miss Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to recognize that we had passed the thirty-eleventh and how that's significant for all of us this year. I would like to uh leave back on what the second had been we toured our D C program. As you know, I'm reached with more than two point. I was appalled to go to one of the R O T C programs and find out that the commanding officer has to call him by his first name. And you look at the R O T C handbooks that's out there to perfect, they're called by their names. We wondered why we have respect issues within our school system. Called by the first name, that's normal call by connects or so. I asked the students why they're doing the R O T C program. Again, a surprise to me, wondering the answer was because it's an easy A. Our nation depends on us to be able to train these students to be productive in society, just like that, not by using. That being said, there's a huge contrast between one R O T C program and the other. The contract, well, I asked for one of the contracts that the high school and that instructor did not give me the contract that he has with the fourth grade from Fort Rad, North Carolina. However, the other one very freely provided it. Then that contract, it states, the classroom, and this was an unique contract to make. Their classroom is forty-five fifty feet with one office and two large storerooms. I believe in the administration, I'm fully convinced they want the program very badly and would support it in any way possible. Now that comes off eighty point two four ten, and that was dated when we started the the R O T C program there. At one point, there were two hundred students, now there's eighty students. One, one instructor specifically asked how to get more emails on a classroom. This is not our gift, it's within the R O T C program. It is not one of those leave-in-the-may programs for the high school. The R O T C programs are treated as serious business, and with that being said, I would be extremely proud from McIntyre and the way that they conducted themselves during our visit at that school along with the. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Pro.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking.
Mister without.
Um thanks for having me, Madam Chair. I'd like to talk a little bit.
Um, thanks for talking to me, Dr. Brian. I'd like to talk a little bit about school report cards. The uh Miss Soria had touched on this a little bit. Um. I used to play golf with guys and I'm not superstitious, but I'm a realist. And uh I think that kind of sums up my ideas of the school report card and particularly with the letter grade. Um, I don't pay a super amount of attention to the letter grade that's given to a school. Um, but I do pay some attention and I pay particular attention to the individual variables that go into the formula. Uh, one of those variables is growth. Growth matters for everybody else. You may notice, I'm going to say it anyway. We take whoever comes in that door in August and we make them better until June and then we try our best to measure that. Um, Deep River Elementary School had a ninety-seven point one uh growth rate. And there's three hundred and seventeen A five elementary schools in the state of North Carolina that ranks fourth out of three hundred and seventy. And their letter grade was a C. Now you try and explain to me how being fourth out of three hundred and seventeen elementary schools of all different social economic backgrounds. Uh, translates towards a C. It doesn't, because there's no explanation. So um extremely helpless, one of them, seven of our eight elementary schools exceeded growth. The one that didn't exceed growth, I believe was an anomaly if I understand correctly, definitely exceeded growth the past two or three years prior to this. Um, so we've got some great elementary schools. I'm so proud of them. I just want to say hats off to the principal, anyone near Deep River, uh her teachers and staff. Just I've been new to them. They do this every year, year and year. Um, uh, so if anybody pays attention though, you understand that. Uh, the pandemic was hard on our middle schools. Um, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. I think data proves that out. We talked a little bit about that. Dr. Brian touched on that. Um, middle schools are a personal focus of mine on this board. I am a shadow away from that statement. I'll say it publicly. It doesn't, it doesn't bother me one bit. Uh, I'm in a unique position that I had a childhood, all three levels of education during the pandemic. I had middle school, we found a high school, West Middle School, and uh my youngest, Carlton, that three three word elementary school. From my personal uh experience, the middle school is hard and there's, there's no doubt in my mind. So, but how do you set that? Uh, this is my last. Um, I've talked to hundreds of parents, teachers and faculty and staff of all the middle schools that part of history wins. Overwhelmingly positive response for the PG schools. There's a different feeling in the schools. Um, there's a different attitude. There's a positive passion. Um, we've seen some of the the um things we've talked about over the summer. Um, that are already being delivered. So I think there's really something special happening in our middle school.
Mr. Woodell, we teach for years.
I'll tell you a little bit. Thank you.
I think this is the first time I've ever had to call time before, never. I apologize. That's the rules we set. Thank you. Now, I'll sit down for you. As we've had school back session now for several weeks, for our first starters at Tramway and Lee Early College. I too have felt this buzz on campus. I have the the blessing of teaching at Central Carolina Community College. Where I have a great number of Lee Early College students and distance ed students from all of our high schools. Not just the hallways with me, but also some of my classes. And I asked the question, I said, how is this year going? And my high school students saying, it's amazing. Those are words I had not heard from high school students in the past couple of years when they say it's just hard. They've said they've had an amazing start to school and that it just improves everything. That's an emotional response, right? Um, if you say, oh, hey, that's logical. I had a lot of classes, I had a lot of work, I'm surviving. It's okay. That's a logical response to how this school go. But when you say it's amazing, that's at the most, right, they're emotionally invested in their education. And trying to use the word amazing says we're going deeper than just subjecting. It's not that, you know, it's like, well, what makes you so great? And they said, everybody wants to be there. And I find that so important. Teachers, hear me, when I say your students want to be there. And they feel like you teachers want to be there. Parents, your students are plugged in, they're engaged. Plug in that energy, feed into that enthusiasm. What an awesome opportunity to have students who are saying that they're having an awesome start to the year. Because sometimes we let the negatives, the things that we hear in the media, in the news, the politics, and the campaigns or the whatevers. Influence our opinion and our thought process and maybe even our dinnertime conversations. Never let our. Maybe negative twenty impact our student performance. Because they are having an awesome start to the year. Wild flow water in America's world. And see how you can soak those brains and build them up to be the awesome students, people, and citizens. We're tasked with raising. I look forward to this awesome year of school in Lake County. Thank teachers, thank students, student ministries, and thank the board for what you do to support our people. At this time, I will conclude the public comment portion of the board member comments. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding the close session. And it's Lake County Board of Education, go ask those officials under N C G S one zero three dash three one eight dot U one A one A three one A six. To discuss confidential speaking information, information under N C G S one zero five C dash four zero two. To discuss confidential personnel information under N C G S one one five C dash three one nine and one one five C dash three two one. It's reported for attorney and maintain your attorney's right privilege.
Same.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing on all papers, if I'm not saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is one. We will move to close session.
I move the Lee County Board of Education meeting, September 13th, 2022. We have two action items rising out of closed session this evening. I believe Mr. Kraken, you have the first one.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move the Lee County Board of Education approve the following administrative one-year contract as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none, and I believe Ms. Hilliard has the second.
I move the Lee County Board of Education approve the Human Resources report as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. At this time, that concludes the action items before the board this evening. At this time, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.